How I discovered.
Good evening, welcome everyone to the city council meeting. The time is now five o'clock. I would ask that each one turn off their cell phones or silence. So we can conduct our council meeting. And if you have not done so, there's a copy of the agenda that you may pick up. I'll leave it at the back of the room if you do not have one. The first item on our administrative agenda will be the tech distribution of appropriations. Sorry, sorry, the first item will be a public resoning of parcel number twenty-six oh six oh four twenty-three zero 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 three dot zero zero six. Brett, would you talk about the business?
He's trying to like to put a house in, but he can't put the house in because it's industrial property. We just want to change it to RH, which backs up to RH, so he can do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Counsel, do you have any comments? Public hearing is closed. Is there anyone in attendance in the audience that would like to speak for or against the rezoning of this particular parcel? If so, please come up and tell your name and we'll allow you three minutes to address the council. Anyone to speak for or against? If not, this public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda will be the tech distribution of appropriations, Mayor.
Y'all come down here, let's go. First one is Flaggrass RC and D.
The next one is Army Aviation Museum Foundation. Next one is Southeast Child Advocacy Center. Next one is Carroll High School J R O T C. Next one is Dale County Council on Arts. Next one is Dale County Extension Office. Dale County Health Department. Mary Hill Family Service Center. Hookup. Those aren't city schools. Now y'all know that we're going through the motions, this is a blank sheet. Those aren't Dale County Football Librarians. Central Care. If you'd be able to school. Why don't I see none of what? Anybody come in for Army Aviation Museum Foundation? We'll get it to them.
Everybody else made the drawing.
And if I may, while they're coming back, I just added up the numbers. Of course, the school system is calculated on a monthly basis based on our sales. But if you add all these up plus what we give the school, it's one point four million dollars.
I'd just like to say that each one of the places for the work that they do each and every day to make our city a better place to build, work, and raise a family. Thank you. Next, we will go over our agenda. We got one more here. Dale County Extension Office events update by Melissa Quanis.
You got it, yeah. I come here, right? I'll be honest, I apologize, I literally ran in here. I was teaching fourth grade all day today and I got really caught up in who's going to make the cheer team. And so I can give y'all a lot of updates on that. But I will spare you, just know we need to pray for these girls, okay? They need to make the squad. Now that that is over with, I really just, I didn't know I was on the official agenda tonight. I wanted a chance to thank you, council, without having really a time limit on it. Of course, there's not really, there's really no way you can put a limit on all that y'all do, you know? Mr. Chris, we'd like to take that one point four million. Everyone would give it in like one lump sum, but we all need it. And if there's ever any question about what the extension does or what this appropriation might do, I did just want to address that for a second. So, extension helps wherever you see health, nutrition, community development, or agricultural natural resource needs in the community. Wherever you see those needs, we are there. That is what our office does. One of the main things that we do is we start, and we serve all ages. So we start at kindergarten with our clover buds, we move all the way up. Like you can see today, I was teaching fourth grade. Normally I would not be wearing this kind of outfit, maybe more professional attire, so it'll be better next time. But our city, those aren't appropriation, goes straight to our budgets used for city of those aren't schools. So we serve Mixon right now. It's almost three hundred people that we serve just by working with Mixon. We've talked a lot with DA Smith Middle Schools, their PTO is very involved right now. We're helping them with their shoe community service project. So please know that that money goes back to that cause. This appropriation from our, ours are good straight back to those aren't. We also work with Parks and Rec, you'll hear a lot about that. And I know some of you heard last week about the new park development that we're working on for different and all abilities. I did just want to speak to that. When we plan our programming, you have extension, we serve all, and we welcome all. And because of that, this park will be a great addition. And I hope that we can find a way to fully fund this if it's not, if it's not already. I haven't had a chance to update on that. Because when we make those plans, we want to serve all, and having a facility to do that would mean a lot for this community, right? And so right now, those aren't doesn't have that, but adding it will be a great thing and an essential thing. So we're very excited for that. We have a big lineup of events, so this is listed as an events update. If you don't already follow extension on Facebook, or you really don't know who I am, who's up here talking right now, you should at least sign up for our email newsletter and learn what all we do with the community. We have a lot of school events until the end of the school year, and after that, it starts being things that everyone in this room could absolutely take part in. We're always looking for adult volunteers. The Cinco de Mayo coming up, we're going to teach you how you can run your own salsa and bake it. We have ways to keep better record books. I mean, how many of you keep great files right now in your personal life? No, you don't, you're online. So, extension can help you with how to do that. We'll teach you ways to think about how you're getting your property. Do you have air property that you want to discuss? We help with that too. And all the other ways that we can make sure our community has unity, right? Especially right now, especially on a day like an election day. How we can bring everyone together, how we can celebrate the great things we're doing in the county. We have someone very important here tonight from my office, Sandy Foss, is in the back, you babe. She was recognized at a previous council meeting as our senior excellence winner for all of Auburn University, right here in Dale County. And we have thirteen other agents that work in our office as well. So, we, I want to meet you tonight. We are happy to serve you. We are very thankful, council, for the way that the site can help us tonight. This appropriation means a lot. So please say hi to us, if not that, give us a call, if not that, find us on Facebook. We'd love to talk to you about how we can help you. So, thank you, council, thank you, everyone.
At this time, we will review the agenda for this evening. First item will be to approve events from the regular council meeting held on February twenty-two thousand thirty-four. Counsel, do you have any comments? Next item will be to set the agenda. Next will be an ordinance, rezoning of parcel twenty-six oh six oh four twenty-three zero zero that zero zero three dot zero zero six from I to the RH, which we just here brought before us by Mr. Brett Healy, council. Do you have anything concerning the approval of this ordinance? Thank you. Next item will be to select the voting delegates and alternates for the annual meeting of the Alabama League of Municipalities. Counsel, do we have any discussion about our delegates, voting delegates, and alternates in this panel?
We have two alternates.
Two alternates.
Yeah.
Brett is not going.
Do you want to warn, you may too? So I take the position that the voting delegates and the alternates should be councilwoman or councilman for all. Do you have anything to say you would want to, any?
I'm going, you're okay. I'll just let y'all vote.
Okay, thanks. Next item will be a resolution pertaining to automated red light enforcement by the Director Ward. You'll tell them.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, what I'm proposing, proposing, there are. What I'm proposing is resolution to be that allows install red light cameras to help enforce people that's running red lights. And it's, one reason is for safety. These cameras will not replace the police officer, but it will help us to do our, our job. And I just pulled some basic stats to kind of tell you why I want y'all to approve this. In the last two years, at the intersection rates, on two thirty-one, we had two hundred and forty-four accidents, sixty-one injuries. This will kind of help alleviate that and kind of, and just be honest, what you put it up to deter folks from doing that. If you ever been out on two thirty-one and seen some of that traffic that runs through those intersections, I think it's something that's well needed. If y'all give us permission, we will work with companies, you know, multiple companies can bid on it and, and for the install. It is no money cost to us on the front end. They'll come and put the cameras in and typically, because I did this when I was in Montana, this typically how it works is they'll do all the collecting on it, and it's usually seventy-five, twenty-five, or eighty, twenty percent, it depends on how they bid on it. And, and so, seventy-five percent of that money comes back to the city. Those tickets, it's not a criminal ticket, it's a civil ticket. The companies, whoever puts them up, they will be responsible for collecting and getting it from the people who shows up on them. And just so you kind of know how it kind of work, when it takes a picture, some will have to have somebody here, we'll take care of that. They'll look at every one of those violations, the validating, and make sure it is correct, that, you know, that nobody's being mistreated on.
How many intersections for that one we're talking about?
We're gonna start off on two thirty-one with every red light on two thirty-one.
Will there be like, we all put up like a signage before, that way drivers coming through, hey, they got red light cameras up ahead. And that way maybe even more safety.
And, and I don't know, and, and I got to research that. I don't know if the company put those signs up or state DOT will, but once you put them up, folks has got GPSs and stuff like that, it will notify them, red light cameras ahead.
Thank you for this, Colonel Ward, I've been asking for that since day one, so.
We've had some work in progress, so.
I'm just happy to see it on the agenda, thank you.
Yeah, I reiterate that myself. A lot of times throughout the days, I'm driving and I see people running stop signs and red lights, and we're just an accident waiting to happen. So I appreciate all that you've done with it.
You get some real funny photographs too, don't you?
Thanks, Director Ward, appreciate it. Also, just to stay up here, because the next one is approving notifications to Jay Z and to clear violations within thirty days, Director Ward.
Okay, and while I'm speaking, Chief Mike Daniels come from, Brett come from. I'm a, Brett, I'm sorry. Okay, this, this is what I'm recommending. I am recommending to the council that we send Days Inn a letter, giving them thirty days to correct some serious violations. We've been dealing with them since I've been here, and, and it's all some, a real, real public safety. And we, at the point, we got to do something with them. So I asked you, my recommendation, they're gonna give you more details in just a second, and give them a letter, thirty days to correct all of these violations. And if they don't do it in thirty days, then we suspend their business license. And they're gonna speak to it, been working with state fire marshals, we have gave them time and time again. And they changed ownership of us and tried to get a skirt the law, and, and state fire marshals no longer don't allow it. So, I'm only Chief Mike Daniels go first, tell all the violations so y'all be familiar with it, and then behind him, Brett will talk about the license violation.
From a fire and life safety perspective, the fire department responded to this place and business twenty-nine times from January one, twenty-twenty-two to January one, twenty-twenty-three. I can assure you that number would have been much higher if the system remained online, if the system was actually working. The business was placed on Firewatch three times in twenty-twenty-three, three times in twenty-three, twenty-three, Firewatch. And again, February the twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-four, fire marshal came down and put it on Firewatch due to multiple violations. Days Inn classification is Romeo One Residential One. Two words, transient and impermanent. Codes are reactive, they tell us when to do something. It's time to do something, thank you.
But, uh, cars of business license, they are licensed and okay, which is transient, they are permanent. So they cannot operate under that license. If they do try to go do a extended study, they would have to contact their architect, get a new fire safety plan to submit that.
We know we have extended study.
Yeah, I asked the guy, he said, yes, we're ready to do that. Yeah.
Next will be a resolution declaring surplus property in the police department, Director Ward.
Okay, I reckon, let me speak to both of them at one time, because it's two, one right behind me. You looking at one, it's got eighteen firearms on it. That is folks that was convicted that those guns was taken from them, they know felons cannot have firearms. And, and the other one is five hundred and thirty-one weapons. It's, some of them is felons, some of those folks have been a property that was turned in, people refused or didn't want them back. And we got, judge have ordered all these to be surplus, so we as a department can dispose of them. And you asked me why we doing this? First of all, to make room in our evidence locker. And, and we're gonna use these to trade them into a gun company to purchase, replace our weapons, our handguns, our long guns. One thing that I want to try to counter share, we got rifles, but we've got some that's got different rifles. I want everybody to have the same weapon and same way with handguns, so that's the purpose of trading these in, these in.
Thank you, Director Ward. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding these two resolutions for surplus property of firearms? Does that reveal how we have that?
And I don't even think that's all of them, that's not even all of them, that's just what we gonna do right now, and as we go through the rest of them, we'll come back at a later time.
Thank you, Director Ward. I guess you can say.
I got a note?
Well, please note that both of those resolutions will take care of the surplus property with firearms, nine nineteen. Next is a second reading application, zero four zero retail beer, owner off residence, zero six zero retail table wine, owner off residence for two thirty-one seafood, Director Ward.
It is my recommendation, I prove it for a cycle reading on that license. I think, Councilor, did we get your?
I got to swear to my, yes.
Okay, yeah, I will prove, folks, there's no objection to the cycle reading on that.
Thank you, Director Ward. Counsel, do you have any concerns in that second reading? Okay, thank you. And thank you, Director Ward.
All right, thank you.
Next item will be to authorize the additional spending increase of ATRIL two dash twenty-three dash twenty-two twenty-two dash three ninety in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars due to utility costs that are not covered with state funding dollars. Mr. Ryan, Counsel, would you cover up?
Well, that pretty much explains it. You see, uh, we, I did provide y'all with a break, more accurate update right now of what our sponsor is going to be. This is the ATRIL two project for economic development for the service road on two thirty-one. And that project, ATRIL, will only pay construction costs. They will not pay your engineering, they will not pay your inspection services, and they will not pay for any utility enhancements. We tried to avoid this, we tried to, there's, that's for water and sewer, by the way, if you're wanting to know, it gives you a breakdown, it's like a hundred and eighty-three thousand, it's the change I highlighted. So anyway, they would not allow us to just accept right away. We've done that in pass with our letter requesting the city to take ownership of a right of way. Normally, they're very agitators, just like I am, to give that up, but for some reason, they did not do it, so they insisted that we remove utilities. One of those was twenty-five thousand dollars was for South East Gas, relocate their gas line, and the forced Iber and those things. But the real expense was the water in sewer. And we had two options, we could either relocate them, that would have been close to a half of eight dollars, that just was not feasible, or do improvements, in this case, we essentially are putting inches of concrete on top of the water and sewer line. So, that is the additional cost, and these prayers are total sponsored for that project to four hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Thank you, Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this with the additional?
I believe this, this comes out of, now, the extra funds.
It's still coming out of our gas tax. So it's not going to come out of sales tax, it comes out of our actual gas tax.
Which we have budgeted, which means less roads.
It says more than we initially budgeted, we initially budgeted two eight three. But keep in mind, that's all preliminary numbers with the exception of what we know, which is what the cost of the utility enhancements will cost. So we could actually come in less than, than what our sponsor match says, depending on what the biz come in, so.
But just to be clear.
We have money for it, yes.
We do, and, but just to be clear, so we also understand that this means less roads that we get to pay this year, probably.
Yes. And that's the good news, yes, at least we were awarded the Community Law Development Grant, which will lead probably sometime in April. So, so that, that's going to be a big help because that's essentially four hundred thousand dollars that we're getting for, it cost us about twenty-seven thousand dollars to match. So, it kind of counters itself, so even though this will put a dent in what I initially planned to pay, we, we were awarded funds that, you know, we did not, we didn't, you know, you can only hope, but, you know, you can't, you can't balance these sheets out with hope, so, so it kind of worked.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item will be the grant approval for the management of East Gate slash Millennium Hall to be transferred to Parks and Recreation.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. We're proposing to have management of Millennium Hall, East Gate, transferred from ODEC, the Economic Development, to Osage Parks and Recreation. We can use those units to store equipment, we can use the rest of those hallways for tournaments and in town use East Gate, so it's a bigger thing for all of us.
So you'll leave rent to the amount of office space?
Some, some of those units will be rented out. Some, some of those units will be rented out, a portion of the building cannot be used as discovery mode, we have to address that. Uh, but some of the units are rented now, some units can be rented, and some units will be used by us, by Ozark Parks and Recreation.
So Parks and Rec is gonna go into managing office space?
Oh, you just need to develop.
Yes, we will.
And that's what the board wanted, the economic and development?
That was, yes, by that man.
Board?
Yep.
Like, like storage space, I mean, majority of it can be storage space, I would, I'm assuming, because that's, that's in a premium, I mean, always gonna have enough storage space, so.
Out of about twenty units, I'm gonna use five or six for storage, I'm gonna use the restrooms as a set, everything else can be up for rental.
I, I, I mean, it's kind of not, you reveal house as far as. Not making it out, I mean, you're not.
Commercial.
Kind of, that's, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
No, it is not, I'm just trying to be a team player and help out, you know, a lot of departments, it's something that I might, you know, might deconstrue, I like to do it.
Will they, will they give you?
Do we speak on the party or not?
Yeah. Yeah, would y'all, would y'all be helping him in that type of thing or something, I hate, or did he just step on?
Where would Rick?
Same, and he threats that we have had, just because with the ballparks being there and softball, um, teams from Carroll are using a portion of that. We have had a hard time renting it out because it's already being used for those things. So for instance, when Dale County schools were in the Millennium Hall, we also had people coming in and using the restrooms or using the hospitality room. Which was a problem, but they dealt with it because they were there for a short amount of time, but it just became, when you got two totally different departments working at the same building, there's a lot of conflict. And so I see it as still uh an opportunity for economic development with the community development, because I think they can do a lot more with it than we can. It does not work well as a business park because it's out of the way and because of those issues. And they're already there, we're not there all the time unless we just go out there for a specific reason, generally, there's somebody in Parks and Rec out there on a regular basis. So it just makes more sense for them to have that. We um have agreed to continue handling the, accepting the payments and invoicing the current tenants as long as they still want them there. But as far as recruiting more businesses to be there on our end, you know, we would, we would prefer for them to do things that, even if it's a business. A business that relates to Parks and Rec more so than just a random business.
But where would Rick go then?
See, that's the budget line item will go to Parks, still go away from economic development into Parks and Rec.
It all goes in a general fund?
It all goes in a general fund.
So y'all agree with that, but that's.
Yes, we're, we're both happy.
Okay, okay. And I have a question too, uh, concerning that, because the mayor had mentioned one time about Fort Rapid and maybe using, utilizing it for.
That's kind of fell off the radar.
Right, that's what I wanted to understand, it would be somewhat of, I guess, a daycare, we, we call it, so that's off the radar right now. Okay, and then the other question I have is, uh, this would encompass everything, including those cafeteria as well, am I right?
Yes.
So that if we did file a tenant for the cafeteria.
Well, there is a current renter for that, and their lease runs out, I think in June, and so at that point, they'll have the option to leave or stay, or Parks and Rec will have the option whether or not to renew their lease.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions, Council? Next, are there any comments from any department here concerning any of the agenda items that we just went over? Next, are there any comments from the floor, from anyone concerning any of the agenda items? We, we have just told, uh, yes, sir, if you come up, uh. Do you mind, anybody say your name?
Sure. Ryan, final journey of votes are, I am opposed to these red light cameras, and I'm not gonna debate the points that other states have, so don't throw anything at me. I just want the council to recognize that nationally, there are twenty-three states that have red light cameras as law, and Alabama's one of them. There are eight states that have laws that prohibit it. And the reason they prohibit it is the same reason why a police officer cannot issue a citation at the point of stop. The citizen has a right to present his case camera or not before a magistrate. And number two, you have a third party who is issuing citizens' citations based upon evidence law upon a line camera. They just was, that's why those eight states prohibit that. All one of the states, thank you.
Thank you, Mr..
Yes, sir.
Appreciate those comments. Anyone else, uh, that would like to speak on any agenda item, uh, that we have just told? If not, are there any ones that would like to make any public comments, questions, requests concerning any subject not on the agenda? If you, again, if you would please come up, state your name, and we'll allow you three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, my name is Brittany Gallant, I live at, um, three two one five Martinian Avenue. I wasn't attending our speaking tonight, but because this is the last, uh, council meeting we'll have before the end of our DA Smith PTO's shoe drive. Um, we're thrilled to announce that our shoe drive has reached a remarkable milestone, it totaled thirty-two bags. At twenty-five pairs per bag, that is eight hundred pairs of shoes collected so far. There are only nine days left, um, in our fundraiser, in our, um, shoe drive fundraiser. Um, I'm so, and we urge anyone who hasn't yet donated or contributed their new used or gently owned, um, shoes to DA Smith Middle School, um, it's time's taken. Uh, we send our heartfelt gratitude, and I do especially, especially right now, because there are so many community members in this room. Who have stepped up and allowed, uh, Melissa has already said, you know, there's a shoe box location at Dale County Extension Office, there's one downstairs. Um, and I even had this lovely gentleman right here, he came up to our, uh, shoe drive, our shoe drive thru on February twenty-fourth. And the only reason he came was because I was here speaking up about it, so thank you so much, sir, and thank you, this council, for allowing me to, um, uh, kind of give that shout out. Um, there are several different locations all around Ozark, so if you visit DA Smith PTO Facebook page, um, to continue this momentum and show our support. And also for, uh, just a last minute thing, um, from five to eight, so whenever you leave here, um, Zach's fees is giving ten percent of your proceeds from five to eight this evening to DA Smith Middle School. So if you haven't had your supper yet, um, when you drive up there and get your, your Zach's nap or what have you, just, uh, make sure you mention DA Smith. Um, thank you.
Thank you. In the dead land, we will be, what, anyone?
For fourteen, four.
Fourteen, fourteen, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Me, sir.
Please come up, state your name.
My name's James Bradley, I live at six ninety-four One Punch Road. And I have two businesses with my son located in the city limits of Ozark. This is strictly just for information purposes, this is not to make any accusations other than I feel like I'm being. The first thing I would like to make sure that everybody understands, that I understand, is the first page of that is a letter that I received from the mayor. And I would like counsel to, to look, do you know about this letter? Prior to the date on the letter, are you aware that that letter was issued to me whatsoever?
I wouldn't make a word of it, uh, this week either.
Yes, sir.
I had no knowledge until Saturday, myself.
Can you, ma'am?
No, I don't.
You, sir? You, sir? Uh, Mr. Mark, I know you know who you should be.
It was emailed to them the same day you received.
Okay, I'm just asking. Um, if you follow through with me with the slides, I'll make it real brief. The first one is the letter, the next two slides is the individual, where it came from, the office that it came from. The next is an excerpt, or it was taken out of some minutes, that was sixteen, January of twenty twenty. If you'll make note of that date, that's when Mr. Blankenship was in office, not Mr. Bunny. Um, it basically says that me and the previous administration made an agreement, and they captured in the minutes that I would provide a bathroom for twenty-four separate services for people flying into our airport, that's basically what it means. Um, fall of twenty twenty-one, there was a meeting based on actions that were taken by the mayor and the ordinance person. Uh, Mr. Tyler Hurst, uh, undoubtedly, I had some things that weren't finished, so Mr. Hurst, at the, uh, request of Mr. Blankenship came over, I'm certain that that didn't cross your desk as well. Um, the meeting that was took place after that was in November. Mr. Hurst, the board members of the Airport Advisory Committee, the chairman of the committee, and a member from Barge Wagner, which is the engineer for our airport. Basically said, it will not work, the chairman said my insu, agreed that my insurance would have a problem with it. In fact, we gave an alternate for Mr. Blankenship and Ms. Denise for a bathroom. Which is the next slide, that has Ms. Denise's, uh, emoji above it, I didn't publish her phone number, I didn't think I was ready. But this set of bathrooms, we ordered for a business that we're associated within Atlanta.
Really, so, we gave them what they're ordering before this?
Believe I got about eighteen minutes standing up, isn't it?
And I would like to amend my comment, I did receive an email.
Okay.
On here, I just, we get so many emails, I just forgot it, so I am aware.
Okay.
Yes.
So we ordered a set of bathrooms from North Carolina to, to utilize at our, uh, business in, at Southeast Atlanta. And that's the next two slides that you see. In fact, Ms. Denise says, cool, if you'll see that on the next slide. And then we off, we also offered you the invoice that we paid for these bathrooms for our other business. That was an app for that day, uh, for our bathroom services. The next slide is you'll see Mr. Mike Brower's hanger, say, is the helicopter, and then the restroom. Mr. Mike Brower says, in twenty twenty-one, please do not use my bathroom no more, you're destroyed, the public is destroying it. Oscar works for the city, he would clean the bathroom, but he would tell you, he would destroy it. So they done away with it, Mr. Mike Brower said, no more. On your next slide, I guess the good lord was looking out for us, but last night, somebody that doesn't even have an airplane on the airport is using the bathroom. Comes out, and as I've told Mr. Blankenship and the council prior, and I can show what was done, as well as Ms. Denise. We're there twelve, fourteen hours a day, normal, normal business hours, and here we are, the next slide will show you, we're open. So that the public use the restroom, we don't have any issue with the public during normal business hours using our facility, none. The UPS man uses our bathroom, I don't have a problem. The problem I have is integrity, safety of aircraft, it's not like a car shop, it's not like a rest area you pull over and use the bathroom, because you can pull over at your car break. If somebody comes through my hangar and accidentally intentionally does something airplane, this could fall out of the sky and it's on me, it's not gonna work. The next slide is you see the FBO, and this is what stemmed, I believe, what stemmed the letter from Mr. Blankenship. Undoubtedly, there's people in the aviation industry that want access to this facility. If I was to take any way on any given time, I'll fly you anywhere in the United States, minus international airport, we can land at that airport, I can punch a code in, use the runway headings, which we have listed. Or the frequency, which we have listed, and it gives the pilot, the crew, access to that facility. Because there's a computer in there that they can check weather, they can check NOTAMs, or they can use the restroom. It's that way in the entire United States. If you look at the next slide, there's a sign there that says, and I blew it up. For interest, to gain interest to the terminal during non-business hours, please call Mr. Oscar. Now, he answered the phone, so believe if he doesn't, I can't help that, but there is your answer for restrooms that you don't have to spend no money. Now, I will tell you this, if you look at the rest of the slide, you add your business hours. Young man in a wheelchair is a business owner in this city. He is listed as the sole proprietorship of the LLC of B and B Flight Services. Any of my customers are employees in this room, raise your hand. Are you aware of Mr. Black, Mr. Braxton's condition? Do you have a problem with his medical equipment in the bathroom? Do you think somebody flying in in wee hours a night is gonna take care of this? If they wouldn't take care of Mike Brower's bathroom that was there when I was a kid? And last, the last thing that I'd like to touch bases with is this, I'm responsible for ten feet around my hangar, which is in my D. When I built here, I asked you for nothing. Every one of you was on the council, and I come to you, I'm sorry, actually, I'm sorry, I said, I don't want anything. I'm using my tax, my retirement to build this facility, I don't want anything. If there's anybody in here with a calculator, I need two people to punch up two sets of numbers, and I'm gonna tell you what this letter just caused, me and this city. But Mr. Blankenship was working with the county commission office at the time, and Ms. Denise went on behalf of a company named Tribe. You remember that, Mr. Blankenship? They gave them some money out of the lodging tax. On behalf of this company, the city took that money and put it into a bank of T papers. Great, I'm all for it. I didn't ask for anything, why couldn't whoever was doing this engineering for us put a bathroom incorporated in that, we wouldn't be here today. Who's got the calculators, you ready for this? I had an investor that sent me to Texas last week, Tuesday, in fact. He was going to invest not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand US dollars. We were gonna get some new aircraft for our fleet, we provide aircraft maintenance for a hundred and forty customers in four states, they fly in here. And we rent aircraft to the customers and to military soldiers to build time for airline. Uh, Mr. Scotty Moore, how much time have you rented from us?
Access of two hundred.
Two hundred hours. The, the investor was gonna invest not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to buy an airplane that would gross money three hundred and eighty-five dollars per flight hour. Being conservatively three hundred hours a year. How much, how much revenue is that, ma'am?
Three hundred and eighty-five per flight hour, three hundred hours per year?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a hundred and sixty thousand per hour?
No, ma'am, three hundred and eighty-five times three hundred hours.
One hundred and five sixty.
That's how much gross revenue that I lost, and I can't get another investor. Now, every hour that airplane flies, it burns nineteen gallons of fuel at the current rate of fuel at Blackwell Airport. Which is, well, it's four dollars and some change, but we'll say five, because we know fuel's going up. So three hundred hours times eighteen gallons an hour times five dollars a gallon.
Twenty-seven thousand.
That's how much fuel sells the city units. I don't want anything, I wanna be left alone where me and my son can do our business. In fact, we put an end to this in twenty twenty-one. If the minutes are brought forward, it will prove that the board, the chairman, Barge Air Bank, put an end to it. I've given them the city's options, just leave us alone. Now, I will say this, yes, me and Mr. Bob Bunny did make a verbal agreement that I would do, I would let the public have access to my hangar for some, some, something in return. They gave me a metal door and a framework around, okay? Case, Mr. Brent, are you in here? You have the plans for my hangar, correct?
Uh, I have to locate it, yes.
Okay, I have extra copy if you need them, but they're stack engineered copy. Once my walls are constructed, and I did get as close to the setting system as wood, the same model. I just can't cut a hole in a wall that's got engineered stamps on it. And timestamp pictures will show that my hangar was erected prior to delivery of the door. Now, Mr. Blankenship afforded me a copy of the purchase order that the city sent out for it. But what I did not receive is the letter from the FAA or anything from play by law. Now, anybody that knows the aviation industry, uh, we rent aircraft, we're a maintenance provider, the FAA comes to me at least possible, is it? I talked to them, they have no complaint on file about bathrooms at a fuel station, at a fuel pump. All I ask you to do is, this is information, I'm not doing, he said, she said, just ask for information and leave us alone. If you're involved. If you're involved, please, Mr. Blankenship. I'm, that's all I'm asking.
James, I did, I provided them the list of the facts since I've been in office. So like you said, I was not a part of this agreement.
That's right.
I can't get on the tail end of that. You've gained several meetings where you talked about working on the bathrooms. I've never heard that anybody told you it was not feasible. As a matter of fact, when, when FAA called and said someone had filed a complaint, and it's one of your close friends had filed a complaint because there was no bathroom with gas pumps, at the next meeting, which was our last meeting, we discussed that. And the, the airport board, to include Michael Cole and the Barge crew, asked me to send you that letter because that has been a point of discussion at every meeting I have had since I've been with Major. Every meeting. Nobody's ever discussed that that was taken off the table. Matter of fact, the documentation in here, I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but where you had a communication with Barge, and you said you were going to install the door, have it open to the public, and you were actually going to work concrete, concrete walkway. And send the documentation.
I understand that that did not take place. If you would look at the logistics around my hangar, a, a engineer would understand. It's not, it's not even possible with the, the fall of the earth or the, the, uh, elevation. It, it's, it's not feasible. The fact that there was, the bathrooms that are in Mike Brower's hangars were there when I was a kid. I built on the spot that my dad worked in a double-wide trailer as a aircraft mechanic. Those of you that remember the double-wide trailer deceptive. Decepting system is four feet from my outer wall, so I connected to it. It's not like, and, and I even got a, my, um, building permit that's stamped off as sewer connect or sewer tap. Um, I'm not living, I'm not saying I'm not providing a bathroom for the public or people passing through. I'm strictly saying, I'm not allowing the public to use my facility after business hour. You're not making anybody else do it.
But James, that's the point. You agreed to that. Were you hiding anything to do with it?
I understand.
Send the paperwork. You agreed to it.
I haven't gotten that paperwork much more.
Though, even the planning commission, when it went before the hiring commission, that bathroom being open to the public was discussed.
It's open. In fact, based on the letter that you sent me right here, I'm in compliance with it. Based on the letter for letter that you just sent me.
Paperwork I had says twenty-four seven.
I know, but this is your letter on this date, and I'm in compliance with it. It, it says, and I don't have my glasses, that's why I have the bigger pieces, but I'm like, but.
Well, the bottom line is, we gotta get a bathroom over there somewhere.
I, I'm with you, Mr. Blankenship. I'm with you. Uh, and did we not discuss on, in November, an option?
I do not recall an option. I'll be honest with you.
Oh, cool.
But, but, you know, if you're not going to put one in, we've got to spend the money to put a bathroom.
I, the, the meeting that I'm referring to, and the minister, the minister produced, I think he was talking about the concrete area, with the old reservoir there. Does that remember?
I do remember that.
Yes.
For some reason, Barge didn't think that was.
They, and ladies and gentlemen, the council, the pictures that you see of the bathroom, and I'm not beating up any golf players, but you know how picky golfers are. Those are nice bathrooms. And I mean, as I said in November, and I will say here on record, just like I said in November, is you utilize that type of system right there. And it don't have to go, you can't see the back of it, but the discharge for the sewers doesn't go down like a typical house or, 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 it goes out the back. So you don't have to do any, uh, plumbing or roughing. But as I said in November, as that, those pictures will show you, I will provide electricity under our account. We will pay, we will donate, whatever. As I said in November, we will, you can hook to the sewers. It's right there. But to, to threaten to disconnect our setting service, if that's what Barge recommended, as you do.
That's a compliment that you're making.
Okay. Thank you. I, I needed to hear that. I, I really did. I really needed to hear that. Thank you.
And let me add one more thing, James.
Yes, sir.
I don't know who you're talking to, FAA, FAA. We had complaints filed just today by a total different subject.
Yes, sir.
And we know who's filed complaints, but, so there is people filing complaints.
I just would have liked to have got it in the mail with the rest of the stuff so it'd been better understood.
Well, I mean, it was just a telephone call to us. We didn't.
Yeah. Again, is there any questions that the council are like that? Because I, I, I know for a fact that the, you don't get presented with anything with the airport unless it's got to do with expensive money. I know beyond a shadow of a doubt. Uh, any questions? I mean, you know.
There's a question, is the airport over addressing to you?
Yes, sir. The meeting in November, the chairman of the board specifically spoke up on my behalf and said, "Hey, Mr. Bradley's insurance is not gonna abide with this." Even if I did provide access. So here's the thing. If, if you come into my hangar, and I have an eighty thousand dollar airplane on Jackson, you, you.
I understand.
But yes, sir, it has been.
We're talking about building a bathroom that's accessible after hours if they don't go into your facility.
No, sir, it has not. Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge.
I bet only way it works is to keep them out of your building.
Yes.
To have it outside, hooked to the building with an outside door.
That's the reason we provided the door.
That's what, that's what the door.
Wasn't there, wasn't there a contractual with, um, economic development? Did you get some kind of?
No, ma'am. I haven't, no, ma'am. No, ma'am. Our two businesses have not utilized one set of taxpayer money.
He only got the property.
Only got the property.
Okay, the property, but wasn't it in that agreement that he would make some improvements to the property?
No, ma'am.
Did I not read that there? Okay.
No, ma'am.
If you have something to tell us, and I think that in your package, you, you have shown us three thousand restroom.
Yes, sir. And one thing that I would ask, I, I am going to ask as a business owner. I, it is my opinion that Barge needs to be held accountable. And a letter to our company, so I can hopefully salvage an investor. Because basically in ninety days, here's what's gonna happen. Based on Barge's recommendation of Mr. Blankenship, based on the letter from Mr. Blankenship, in ninety days, they're gonna cut me loose, which the sewer tap is well within my boundaries of my hangar. It's, in other words, it's in my beliefs. Therefore, I have two women, a son, and customers that are no longer going to be able to use the restroom. Now, my ultimate thing is, is the airport is a business. Do we agree? There's a portajon on the facility. So if the city, if the airport is a business and a portajon is good enough, my employees need a restroom. Is there gonna be a problem when we bring in a portajon? Are we gonna be back up here trying to? Because I gotta have an app. I've gotta have an app.
Let us try to get it resolved.
Hey, here's, here's one thing. I think if, you know, say if you could put something like, I, I guess the bathroom is enclosed, so it's, it's like a, it's a separate room in your hangar, right?
Correct.
I mean, maybe get, maybe like a deadbolt lock, a lock in front of interior, then just put that door on the outside, and then that would get an outside access.
As we discussed in November, and Mr., the enforcement officer or whatever, um, there's plumbing in the walls, on the wall that the bathroom is on, and the back wall. And the back wall, from the moment you leave the edge of the building, is immediately eight foot of fall. I'll go back just like that. So no, sir.
You could do whatever.
As I said, if there's anything that I can do with something similar to this, I will, as, as I'm here, I will.
Mr. Bradley, one thing I'd like to say just to, when we close this out, is that to disconnect any sewage or water in this city, it would have to go before the Ozark Utilities Board. And they will meet on the fourth Monday in, for Tuesday rather, in this month at five o'clock downstairs. So, uh, my recommendation would be, uh, that you might like to attend that meeting. But the utility board would be the, uh, authority when it comes to connect or disconnect of water and sewage in this city.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time. I appreciate what you brought forth. I think, uh, the council, the group myself, uh, we were not, is not involved about the situation. Uh, at least I wasn't until here. Like I say, I will notify about it on Saturday.
You didn't check email.
I'm sorry, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you very much.
But I appreciate your time. Thank you. Okay, is there any other, uh, comments from the floor concerning any, none attending the IC? Uh, sir, say your name and give you three minutes.
Hey, my name's Kevin Jones, and I'm in the Wood Park Road. Um, in twenty twenty-two, I went to Montgomery. My brother took me because my wife is at home with kids, so we'll see how it goes. Come back, all the way back, all the way there, and back. Our car's skipping and all that. It's a twenty thirteen Kia, so it was running great. We lived, but halfway there, we start skipping, running great. We make it all the way back here, and it dies. Our air is a doll's. So in the process, I'm trying to figure out what's wrong with it because I'm a mechanic. I have this love of working. I love working on cars. I just get off on the car, so I have to kind of move on. I get rid of the car. I find another car that's running, as soon as I use the vehicle. I buy it. I work out a deal where I can pay the person, they go and sign it over, and I pay them how much, I feel it's paid off. I get it paid off. I get it home. The clutch is burned out. Yes, it's overridable, stuff like happens. But when the clutch burns out, there's nothing wrong with the vehicle. It's just the clutch has been replaced. You have to take the transmission all the way out. It's a major job. Well, I get the transmission out. The oil from the transmission, they say, were because there's something wrong with the seals. That was one thing I have not learned yet, is rebuild a transmission, a manual transmission. I wanted to attain that. I was trying to figure out what it was gonna take. I was also working, and I'm usually on paper, so I'm literally having to do some of this stuff by looking up, seeing if someone else has done it, and, yeah. My vehicle was taken, stolen out of my yard. And I know I'm not the only one. There was others people that had flat tires, I've heard. I've heard it was RV that was ripped out of its yard. It's committed to the power box. We live in a country that's supposed to be free. That's the motto. The home is free, the land is great. I'm being great right now. I'm cutting the floor here. I'm talking about this. I've been upset about it. It was, it happened. The car was, this is a simple Honda Civic. But it's not it. And it looked pretty, and I was gonna make it better and better and better because it inspired me just by looking at it. I have no disrespect to any five oh one C three nonprofits. But if you wanna help the people, instead of taking their vehicle, help them fix their vehicle if it's that big of a deal. I mean, some of the people I've heard, they were trying to fix the car. They were really trying to fix it. Or I heard of a store where they went to the store, they had their rims off the car. They would sort of go get brakes to fix their vehicle, and it was taken by a dog. And it's like. My wife owns our house. It was taken off of our property. I mean, it's, it's not America, it's China. It's Germany. It's whatever you want to call it.
Could you not understand what you're saying?
Well, I don't understand that.
Mr. Jones, who took your car?
Yeah. According to the city, it was the city. The company that took it was Dixie Tony.
Dixie Tony?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Chief, uh, Director Ward, do you have any knowledge of what?
I don't know this, do you? Um, it was back in, uh, August of twenty twenty-three.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with this one. What street?
Wood Park Road.
What's the address?
Ten thirty East Wood Parker. I'm not the only one that it was taken. I mean, why, why are y'all pointing out? I know it probably doesn't matter, but why does it matter about this one vehicle? My wife had our truck parked by the road up next to the ditch. There's a ditch in our yard. That's part of our yard. And, uh, excuse me, it was up in the back of the yard. And a guy came by that was taking pictures. And he's like, "Oh," he stopped and started taking pictures of our house. And he's like, "This is after. This is this, this year, this year, January." And he's like, "Uh, oh, I've taken pictures of that truck. It's been living for a while." So it's our property. This is America. And, and I'm sorry. And like I said, I, I mean, no disrespect to five oh one C three, but all the, I've said in the last couple sessions, I've had all the money that y'all have given away. If you see someone where their vehicle is broken down, and you're tired of seeing it, either have them fix it, or stop looking at the yard. I'm sorry, but, I mean, boy, that's funny. You know, like, the guy at the airport was saying, "We, we just won't be like, no, we just want lakes." No, I don't want to buy my own lakes. I don't want to, we get home with lakes.
Thank you.
I, I got one last sentence, please. I, I understand y'all wanna make the place look great. I understand that Google came through here with their cameras, and they were trying to make it look good for Google. But if y'all can't help the people fix their vehicle with the money that, the extra money that comes in, give them two years so they have the income tax, that they've got income tax coming in, that they fix it. If they, and the reason why I say two years is because something may happen. They may have a credit card that was out of the building. They had to pay it off to get up off their feet. Give them two years or something. Then do something, I pray, in the name of Jesus.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Bring it up. Down the force, and we'll try to get your response. Okay, uh, are there any other comments from the court concerned?
Yes.
I, I won't take too many of the tax updates. Uh, my name's Bernard Daniels. I stay in the Kennesaw Gap area of Ozark. And I come to y'all today to ask you for your help, uh, on the road that I stay on. Uh, stay on, uh, one by two Jeff Stewart Court. And the road is literally broke, right? I got a, I got a nine-inch deep hole about half, about, I'd say about almost three yards long. And it's just as far, uh, tall as it is deep. A part of it is deep, and part of it is tall, and part is tall. The road is broken up. And we got humps coming up. Humps is coming off the road, right? And I, my wife called, uh, called the city, come out there, came out there, looked at it, and said, "Uh, well, we'll get back with you, uh, we'll get back with you in a week." So she called again after about three weeks. I, the guy came out there, said, "Uh, well, all I can do right now is put a comb out there." Put a comb on that, put a tall part sticking up, because when the mailman comes, he have time to get to the mailbox, and he's rocking like crazy, you know? So, uh, I come to y'all to ask y'all, can y'all help us with the road? Because my road is an accident waiting to happen because it's cracked all the way down from the top of the hill all the way down to the end. You know, and who I, right, who else did, it's, it's, it's breaking up. So I ask y'all for y'all's help. If I can get any help, I, I would be appreciative, uh, gladly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
Try to address that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You want to speak on it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, I don't know about the, who said one week. I didn't come out there, but, uh, you know, it's caused by the garbage truck. It's just like every place else. We've got groundwater, and the garbage truck pumps it up, and struts a little. That's the problem. And nobody's gonna fall through it. Uh, we need to put some hot mix we can, but, you know, we had to, you know, we had priorities.
You know, man, dig them.
Yeah, but we had priorities, is we had to use hot mix that's called. And so there, you know, there's things that we try to align up, so we'll get there.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for addressing that. All right. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on any, none attending the IC? If not, uh, this administrator, he is adjourned, you would, uh.
Okay, three minutes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Mayor, like, any chance of a gentleman?
Yeah, I need to go over a couple things. Uh, mentioning all the EMS legislation, uh, that's passed the House is currently in the Senate. Uh, we did receive our lady box that we had ordered, uh, last week, and we plan on installing it week after next. We're gonna do that in-house. The, uh, of course, y'all can see that color wash is, uh, coming along really well. They have a block laid, USDA building, uh, they have it ready to plunge and ready for the slab. The sewer project at, uh, running for low warm rate south, Parker Drive, is going to awaken material. The sewer project at, uh, running for low warm rate south, Parker Drive is going to awaken material. And the, uh, Poland House thirty by sixty slab, we have awarded that to a contractor. Uh, we are seeing some, uh, movement on the bail properties, so we hope to go get more information on that soon. The, uh, trusses are in on the framing of the apartments behind, uh, Love Trump Top. The HVAC units for the Civic Center are in route. Uh, Goldfinger's, uh, we found out today, will be opening between March twentieth and March twenty-third. They have between thirty-five and forty, they probably started training on Monday. You have a hanger flyer in front of you that we're about to start advertising. Looks like, based on barge and board, uh, looks like that, uh, we'll try to rent that for about thirty-eight hundred dollars a month. Uh, on Friday, I will be meeting with the Daleville School Superintendent to go over our flyer that promotes what we have to offer from employee standpoint. So, uh, hopefully we can get that into their, their system. We did have on the agenda tonight something that we pulled, and that was where we were going to try to use some help up correction facility employees, picking up trash and some other miscellaneous things. We pulled that at the recommendation of Professor Adams, because there was a lawsuit filed last week, uh, claiming that to be slavery or a form of slavery. Even though they signed a consent form, and the people were more than willing to get out of jail and go work outside, uh, we, we'll revisit that later. Just want to tell y'all that the fire that we had on Broad Street last week, uh, wish each one of you had been there to watch our police fire EMS, how well they work together. Uh, it was really amazing watching them, uh, the, you know, EMS folks pulling fire hoses around and changing air bottles out of the fireman, and I mean, it was really a true team effort, uh, was really proud of that group. And, uh, the, uh, last thing, if you see my city car, it's crushed in the back end. I got hit on Broad Street last week at a traffic light. The guy's insurance will be paying for it, and I'll be getting estimates in the next few days, but I believe I saw that.
Thank you, Bill, thousand good things.
Uh, have y'all tried the two thirty-one C three restaurant yet? That was really good, I mean, I just got a, every time you drop by there, a lot of folks, uh, so y'all check that out. And then today, at the election day voting, those new lights inside the Civic Center or something else, I mean, that really, really, I mean, it's a whole new look in there from that, so it's looking good.
Uh, yes, I was, I was looking at my watch, the polls are still open until seven, so you've got time, if you go ahead and did just now, you can go vote. Um, I lost my sticker, I don't know whether he's...
They don't stick where you vote.
And this week is We Cross America, so if you have an opportunity to go to a child's classroom to read this week, please do so. Um, reading is fundamental in our children's lives, teaching them conversation and just, um, you literacy in general, so it's important.
Oh, yes, Jeff Foxworthy, Thursday night, twenty-fourth, uh, five dollars.
At this time, uh, we will end our administrative meetings. Uh, we will begin our regular council meeting in three minutes, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will begin our regular council meeting. I would ask that we have proud that, uh, councilor, anything? I would ask the council to allow the leaders in the pledge of allegiance.
I, yes, I'm sorry, we just like to show our faithful faithful and the freedom for them, for them to make, to make freedom, or to express, to express may be glory, may be lead decision. That we may go back to your blessings, one universal family, Christ my my brother, amen.
The religions too flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor, anything, Councilor, you're welcome. First item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting down on February twenty, two thousand twenty-four, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move to approve the minutes from regular council meeting here on February twenty, two thousand twenty-four, move to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second? The move is properly seconded, that we approve the minutes from the regular council meeting down on February twenty, two thousand twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next would be to set the agenda, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I heard that we set the agenda as printed.
Uh, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, then move and properly seconded that the agenda be set as presented, in the discussion. All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next item is an ordinance rezoning of parcel twenty-six dash oh six oh four dash twenty, dash three, dash zero zero zero, dash zero zero three, dot zero zero six, from I two to RH, what are the wishes of the council?
I introduce an ordinance, uh, re- resigning parcel number two-six oh six oh four, two-zero-three, zero-zero-zero, dot zero-zero-three, dot zero-zero-six, from IH to RH. Oh, I two to RH, excuse me, a move for its adoption.
Okay, we have a motion to rezone this property, is there a second?
Second.
The move is properly seconded, that the rezoning of this parcel, uh, takes place, uh, in the discussion. All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, motion carry. Next item would be the voting delegates, uh, and alternates of the annual meeting of the Alabama League of Municipalities. Uh, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I, I recommend our voting delegate number one to be Winston Jackson. Uh, the second alternate voting delegate would be Leah Harlow. And the third, uh, third alternate, uh, second alternate voting delegate would be, take myself less for all.
Okay, uh, you heard the motion for the following delegates to the annual meeting of Alabama League of Municipalities, is there a second?
Second.
In the discussion? All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next is a resolution pertaining to automated red light enforcement, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Chairman, may I? He's just the second. These, uh, automated red light, uh, lights have been a matter of controversy. Uh, Mr. Fontenot brought some matters to your attention. Uh, this, these matters have been solved. The, the deprocess, all of the things dealing with criminal prosecutions and criminal records, and things that would, would be, uh, something that somebody could not, uh, question their accuser. And we know that that's what you have the right to do in criminal court. That's not what these, what happens now is, is the, uh, is, is Director Ward told you, these are now civil cases. They're not criminal. They don't take away points on your license, they are civil. They, they basically are a warning with a penalty. And, uh, it, it, but they're not criminal, so they're not, you're not violating anyone's rights, uh, as, 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 as it was when they were criminal, they started out as criminal cases. In fact, I think Montgomery got sued, uh, on it, and, uh, but they, they are plenty pictures, so you, you get to see some, uh, people not paying attention. But, uh, anyway, they, they, they're not criminal cases, they are civil cases. And the company will, uh, collect the monies, and there, there will be significant monies collected.
Thanks, Senator, I'd like to make that clear, occasion to us. Um, what are the wishes of the council regarding this particular resolution pertaining to automated red light enforcement?
I... Go ahead.
Mr. President, I introduce the resolution pertaining to automated red light enforcement, a move for its adoption. I just want to make a statement also, I think we can trust Director Ward, at least as high up as you can go in the state, stay true. I think he knows this is right, and he'll work it right.
Yeah, we did homework, and it's, it's placed, it's stuck in place where people not be, that it will be a civil matter. Do I have a second?
Second.
The move is properly seconded, that we approve the resolution pertaining to automated red light enforcement, any discussion?
May I, may I say a word?
Well, that time is past, ma'am, uh, in the first second.
You said that you, you opened it for discussion.
Yes, ma'am, but this is for us. See what happened, I know you're not aware of it, but we actually went over this in our administrative meeting, and that will, that trial meeting allowed the public a chance to discuss it.
Okay, so this is a closed meeting?
Right, yes, ma'am, uh... It's, it's open, it's, it's open for the citizens to stay if you wish, but, uh...
It's a closed meeting, so...
But it was actually afforded you the opportunity in the previous meeting before we took the break, to come in on those lights.
Ma'am, this is a meeting of the council, the administrative meeting prior to it was for the public. This is a meeting of the council.
I don't have a voice.
Yes, ma'am, you have a voice, you have a voice earlier. Yes, ma'am, you have a voice. Okay, uh, I think where it was at, was, as far as second, any discussion? All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next item would be approving notification to days in to clear violations within thirty days, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the notification that the days in to clear their violations within thirty days, and the first option.
Is there a second?
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded, we approve the notification to days in to clear violation within thirty days, any discussion? All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next would be to introduce a resolution declaring surplus property in the police department. What are the wishes of the council?
Uh, Mr. President, I introduce the resolution declaring surplus property in the police department of eighteen assorted firearms, a move for its adoption.
We have a motion declaring this surplus property in the police department, uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next item is a resolution declaring surplus property in the police department, what are the wishes of the council?
I introduce the resolution declaring surplus property in the police department of five hundred and thirty-one assorted firearms, a move for its adoption.
The move that we approve this resolution declaring surplus property in the police department, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next is to approve a second reading application on four zero retail beer on our premises, and oh six zero retail wine off, on our premises, for two thousand one seafood, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, hey, here's, uh, the, the second reading, go approve the second reading application. Retail, uh, beer on our premises, and retail table wine on our premises, to two thirty-one seafood, and, uh, move for its adoption.
The move that we approve this, uh, second reading application, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next would be to authorize the additional spending increase of ATRIP two dash twenty-three, dash twenty-two, twenty-two, dash three-nine, in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, due to utility costs that are not covered with state funding dollars. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move to authorize the additional spending increase of ATRIP two twenty-three, dash twenty-two, twenty-two, dash three-nine, in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, due to utility costs that are not covered with state funding dollars, and whether it's proven.
We have a motion to authorize this additional, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next item is grant approval for the management of East Gate Millennium Hall to be transferred from Oday to Parks and Recreation, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion to grant approval for the management of East Gate Millennium Hall to be transferred to Parks and Recreation, proposal.
We have a motion to approve this grant approval, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yes.
Got one opposed for the record, Mr. Flirt.
They're rare, I heard.
Motion carry. At this time, uh, I'll take any comments from the council, councilor, anything? Councilor, you're welcome, else the woman, how long?
I'm good, you got thirty minutes to go vote.
And I just like to thank everyone for attending, and as stated, uh, you still have time to go vote.
An hour and a half, we'll get back to you.
I, I, in a manner, motion to adjourn.
It's back to you, how late is that?
Till eight.
Yes, the motion is second to adjourn, all in favor, let me know by the sign of eye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Good night.
Hey, watch your cat, dog, but come...